Are meeting to order. Just so everyone knows that you know vaccinated and we're sufficiently. And I am shielded, so I'm gonna unmask, I hope.
Good. I'm looking like.
Okay, so when this call is meeting to order today is Monday, April 5th, 2021. This is the regular meeting of the city council, WPC. We are in the city hall auditorium and this is a hybrid meeting. So participating in person, I have Councilwoman Wagner, Councilwoman Rabino, Councilwoman Rouette. Participating via Zoom, I have Councilwoman. Cavaniara, Councilwoman Waldron, and Councilwoman Oliver. And with that, I'll jump right into. Item one on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public. And according to Section 4E of the City Council WPC meeting rules of procedure. For members of the public attending in person only. Those attending by Zoom may submit comments in writing prior to the meeting. So I have a motion to open the meeting to the public. Yes, so sorry, so I can resume all this time, so before we begin, let's. Thank you. Now I'll call a motion to open the public. So.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Rabino, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Other members from the public wishing to address the council this evening? Yes, so the microphone over there is live.
Yeah, it's good evening, everybody, Frank Willis, Torrington, Connecticut, Pierce Street. I don't think I forgot, I think that's what I have to say. But we'll get back in the groove again. It was the first Monday and the third Monday of the month, so. I held on, looking at my pretty face, maybe pretty soon when I'll unmask, I hope. A lot of people don't like Trump, but that's okay, but these Democrats, I don't know about. I'll tell you, they're driving me crazy right now. I think they're driving me crazy, but hey. It is what it is, I think we got stolen from us, but that's okay. I think the pandemic was the biggest problem going forward with the with the election for Mr. Trump. I think that was the biggest problem they had, all these mail-in ballots. I just hope they don't do it, but see what happened in Georgia? Everything is gonna be upside down, but hey. It's a start and I hope it continues to other states. So anyhow, I got a little pad here, but I won't be able to do everything on my pad. So I'm just gonna say a few things that come to my head and my heart. I don't usually use a pad or write things down to read off the thing with da, 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 this and that. I'm really not that type of person. But some people don't like what I say. Sometimes it doesn't come out the right way. But I know what I'm trying to say, but it doesn't come out, but other people may have a different. Interpretation than what I'm trying to say. And they may, they may get mad because I say this, I don't say it the right way, because I don't have that. I don't have that, that groove that everybody has to say what you gotta say. I'm not a person to keep quiet. I'm not a person that you're gonna like, like the Democrats, if you don't agree with them. They shut you off, well, I'm not gonna be one to keep my mouth shut. I'm gonna open up my mouth and say what I gotta say, like it or don't like it. But a few other things here, I feel that earlier in the year, last year. When the voting was here for Cook and I play Chris bias. I feel it was like the same thing. With the ballots as far as Mrs. Cook and this and that. I'm not gonna go into detail that I think what happened. I know pretty much, I could be 99% sure what happened. He was winning pretty good in the beginning and then towards the end. It seemed like she came up with these. Mail-in ballots from innocent homes or whatever else you wanna think about, how you think. That's how I think it happened, but that's my interpretation. That's what I think, and that's what I looked at in the whole situation, but. It could not be, but I think that was pretty much what happened. I'm gonna jump around a little because I don't want, I only got 10 minutes, but the other thing was these teachers' union. From these schools, I think this is, it's the worst thing that's ever happened. Not only in Torrington, but all over. The teachers' union went crazy, they wanted this, they wanted that, they got this, they got that, they still wanna open up, they still ain't open up. And who's, who's gonna get hurt the most? The poor kids, I mean, I don't have any kids that are in school, I have grandkids that are in school, I have granddaughter that's in college. She'd be going to DC as soon as it's approved and I think it's in probably November, I think, it's just that, something like that. She might be going to DC, but she does everything at home on the computer for it, this and that. The housing on Franklin Street, I think that's a pretty good operation that's took off. And I think it'll be a good thing, but the only thing I gotta ask is. What about, who's gonna, who's gonna take these apartments? There're gonna be some that are three bedrooms, two bedrooms, and one bedroom. Are these people gonna be bussed in here for voluntary, like the bus runs every day back and forth, there's a lot of trouble. On Oak Avenue, a lot of trouble over there next to Cumberland Farms. In downtown at the Green where people drop off these people for voluntary, there's a big bus that comes up and drops these kids off. For what reason? That's what, that's what we call foot traffic, I guess, busting in for foot traffic. I think that's the, that must be the thing that is, what's happening, I don't know. But I don't know who's gonna get these, these poor houses for low income, this and that. And see where, see where it goes from there, but I, I do think it's a nice thing along the river. As far as the foot traffic there for the, the green, what do you call that thing, the greenway for the. The walkway down through there, it goes all the way to Thomasville and up to Winston. I think once it's all done, the other piece from Winston, there's a section in there that's gotta be done, I miss, but. I think it's a wetlands in there, I think something's going on there with that, with that operation, but. I think that's what's happening there. Like I said to before, I, I got a lot of free time now on my hands, I'm retired. So I'm putting it out for anybody that's on the council or anybody that knows somebody that needs to. Volunteer work to be done or volunteer hand or this and that. I got my hand right and the left, so I mean, I'm available. I'll be 70 in December, but I feel like I'm 45, so I feel strong, I feel good. I don't take any medications, I don't have a heart trouble, I don't have breathing problems, I don't have blood pressure problems, I don't take medication, but nothing still. If there's some kind of job that's a little bit too heavy for somebody to handle, call Red. Red's on the, on the right hand or left hand, we can, we can manage it, just like my old friend Joe Roulette. He was the best boss I've ever had in my life. He's the one, he's the one that made me pretty much who I am as far as work. You gotta go to work, you work for somebody for eight hours for eight hours pay. And Joe was the guy that, you know, throwing it in my head, says, when you go to work, you gotta work eight hours, eight hours pay. You know, everybody, keep your mouth shut, do what you're job, do what you gotta do. He was a great, great teacher for me, anyway. One more thing. This parking wreck, I don't know if, this thing has really got me going. I talked to a parking wreck before down there about the baseball fields that they gotta charge. The kids that play ball now. I don't understand, so I, I even, I even said to the parking wreck, I said, listen. If you need somebody. I'm a volunteer, I can go down there and do probably a better job than parking wreck does with the field and everything else. But you know what I was told? It's the union, Park and Rent won't let you do that. I says, I'm volunteering, I says, instead of, I know you guys now are saying, oh, we need money to do this because it costs money for. For the people to help out and, and mow the grass and do the field and clean this and do that, all of your thing else. I says, I'm capable, I'm willing, I says, why don't you, you know. Ask, why don't you see if there's people that would wanna be volunteered to do this kind of stuff? I says, there's a lot of us that would like to do that. But he says, no, he says, we can't do that because of the union. So I think I, I spilled enough out, I think you heard enough of me, so. This is what it is and we'll see you again next Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month, so. I'll, I'll be here. It's nice to see everybody, but I'm just a few of them are missing, so.
They're on the screen, they're all here.
Oh, there they are. Well, everybody could hear me then, right? They heard everything I said?
They had. You did that perfectly because you.
Well, there we go, but see, that's the other problem, I gotta say, I got a couple more minutes. See, I'm not.
I'm sorry, I do have to cut you off, it's, it's 10 and.
Okay, I don't know how to, I don't know how to use the computer, so I don't know how to do what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to address the board?
I, I would just want something.
Sure. Do I have a microphone?
No, he's okay, I'm standing here. Are the kids gonna be getting to go to school pretty soon? I mean, that's really was, you know, it's making a lot of hurt on that, you know? They need to be in school and they're losing so much. Is there any reason why that keeps happening?
So you would probably wanna take that question to the Board of Education, I know that they are doing hybrid learning and getting their high school. Their elementary schools have been in, they're getting their high school kids in.
Yeah.
But you can address that to the Board of Ed and other meetings are the third ones.
And I like that, you know, they're, you know, they're home doing things, but it's not getting like everything they need and, you know, it's been so long. I just feel sorry for all the kids.
I'm a little worried that the other council members can't hear anything that you're saying if you're not in the microphone.
Are you sure?
You want me to go to the microphone?
Yes.
Eleanor, I can't hear her.
Thank you, I just asked her to go to the microphone, on this one.
Thank you.
And for the record, state your name and address, please.
I'm here, Willis. On Tor, in Torrington. Is that enough now?
It's good.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm, I'm really, you know, even my kids are, you know, they, they wanna get to school. And it seems like the teachers, some of them are keeping it from that because they still want to stay, stay out. And this is, it's making up even the kids, the other kids and stuff and. You know, the ones that are gonna be going to different places and stuff, I mean, this is our concern, are they gonna do anything about that or? It's just, they say that they don't wanna move back in because they're getting tired of being out. And I don't think that's right because these kids are getting. Really wanna come home from bunches, where they gonna stay, what they gonna do, you know, and they. Some of them, I know one of my friends, Sonals, took his honeybee under that. And, you know, it's, it's really getting hard, they need to get in there. And, you know, the people that wanna be teachers who get themselves in there and do their some work, you know, we all turn off. You know what I mean? But, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public? I, oh. All right, let's move into item number two on the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing on March 15th, 2021. So, thank you, Councilwoman Wagner, second.
Second.
Secondly, Councilwoman Rabino, questions on the minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on March 15th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second, second by Councilwoman Wagner, questions on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number 143-216. publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. I will, thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, I'll second by Councilwoman Wagner, other questions on this motion? Hearing none, I'll call it, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to enter into a license agreement with the Catholic Cemeteries Association. Of the Archdiocese of Hartford, New York, for the use of Bishop Donnelly's sports complex as a city park. And athletic field for a three-year period beginning January 1, 2021 and ending December 31, 2023. So.
Second.
I heard Councilwoman Wagner and second by Councilwoman Oliver. Questions on this motion? Just a worry.
You know, now they have solar panels there, I think they don't do too much of a whole run. Very concerned in all us.
Yeah, and Verage knew that, because they knew that field was an actively used field, so, yes. Other questions or comments before I call it?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Cavaniara?
Yes, I'm having a little time here, the audio's a little muffled this time, I'm not sure why, but, and I'm not sure what Councilwoman Rouette just asked, but. If it's not the same question, was there an indication why they wanted to shorten the lease period?
No, I think it is shortened, it's been three years.
No, it's been shortened, it was the diocese's request. Without any explanation, he asked for, I think it was four years before actually, and he asked for that. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, it was five. No, they didn't want, I'm not sure what the explanation is, is it their property and they just wanted three years?
Okay, this property has the same, right, the same legal status as the property, they just converted to the solar farm, is that right?
It does, it's owned by the Archdiocese.
I'm sorry, Mayor, was that a yes?
Yes, it is owned by the Archdiocese Cemetery Association, so it is all the same property as where the solar panels are.
Okay.
It's shown as two different pieces, however, on the, on the survey. And the license, obviously, is for the athletic field portion only, now obviously not for the portion that has the solar fence.
Right, and the city has no control of, if the, if the diocese wants to lease that to Eversource to extend their farm? We have no power to stop that, right?
Well, the existing lease is between the Catholic.
Right, at, at determinate.
Wherever you land, Eversource. But yes, this is their property and they could certainly just continue leasing into the city.
Does the city feel that, that Eversource has lived up to their stated. Intent to aesthetically. Mask that, that property as best as possible?
It's my understanding that Verage not only lived up to the expectation of planting a green fence. I think it's Abercrombie, but they also extended that to turn the corner to the west facing. So that the houses a little bit further down the road would also get the benefit of the additional screening.
Okay. That, that's it for me, I stand down, thank you, Mayor.
So, other questions? Hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the purchasing agent and the chief of police. And authorize the city to award the contract. For 14 tactical ballistic entry vests for the 2010 Police Department's Special Response Team. To Tactical Police Gear of Chester, Connecticut, for a total cost of $36,400 pending approval by the Board of Public Safety. So moved. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner, seconded by Councilwoman Rabino, are there questions, I see. Rabino is on the call if you have questions. Hearing none, I'll call a motion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the purchasing agent. And chief of police and authorize the city to award the contract for 28 ballistic rifle plates. For the ballistic vests for the 2010 Police Department's Special Response Team. To Tactical Police Gear of Chester, Connecticut, for a total cost of $10,920, again pending approval from the Board of Public Safety. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Seconded, sorry.
Seconded by Councilwoman Rouette, are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item eight, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the purchasing agent. Fire chief and selection committee to authorize the city to commence the fire lieutenant promotional process. And award the contract for promotional testing services to Research Management Associates Agency. Of Tinley Park, Illinois, for the total cost of $8,500. To be funded from the 2021 fiscal year budget account 5284 service agreements. And to have the mayor act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract and its administration pending approval by the Board of Public Safety. Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Rabino, are there questions on this motion, I think I saw Jake Towey on the call. No questions, I'll call a motion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Superintendent and purchasing agent. To award the contract for rental portable toilets for the 2021-2022 season to the United Site Services Northeast of Westboro, Mass. And the sum of $140.10 per regular unit per month and $165 per handicap unit per month. And authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract and its administration.
So moved.
I heard Councilwoman Wagner, I heard Councilwoman Waldron, questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 10, I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Superintendent. And the review committee to authorize the mayor to enter into contract negotiations and award a one-year contract. To Still River Gardens LLC in Westfield, Connecticut. For the services and fees described in the proposal dated March 25th, 2021. For the design, planting, and maintenance of the downtown garden beds, planters and trees. With an option to renew for up to five years and have the mayor act on behalf of the city regarding the execution of the contract. Thank you, Councilwoman Rouette. Seconded by Councilwoman Rabino, are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 11, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the purchasing agent and economic development director. To authorize the city to award the contract for an on-call economic development media services. To Westfield Production Company of Avro Park, New York, for the total cost of $14,650. With the possibility of including additional options as needed per the fee proposal. This motion doesn't indicate that this is a contract being awarded and budgeted under our Building Healthier Communities grant fund. Do I have a motion?
Set attachment does. Any good, good, okay, I'll second.
Thank you, so I have a motion by Councilwoman Rouette, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner, are there questions on the motion?
I think this is a good idea, I think. As you well know, the Northwest Connecticut Economic Development is doing some videos for the region, but I think this is really important to our community. And, and I've read the entire proposal and I think that they have a handle on what is happening. And what's happening in your district exactly and how we're going, so. That's all, I'm just very positive, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I'm calling a motion, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to establish a Sustainable CT ad hoc sustainability team. And approve the appointment of Jeremy Leifer, Rista Malaka, and Richard Lopez, actually, I do have a fourth member to add to this. The fourth member would be Tamara Williams to this sustainability team.
I'll move it.
Thank you. Second, I have a motion made by Councilwoman Rabino, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner, questions on this motion?
Could you explain what a sustainable Connecticut is?
So, a few years ago, you may recall, the council agreed to participate in the Sustainable CT program. This is a statewide. Program that is designed to help municipalities achieve points towards goals in the areas of economic development. Environmental, environmental interests, public safety, equity, you know, water and. Pollution, brown field remediation, they have all of these various categories. And with some of these categories are grant funds. The Jeremy Leifer from our land use office has been taking the lead and trying to get us to accomplish some of these. And we reached where we do need to obtain a sustainability team that can pull everything together to be submitted to Sustainable CT. Is that that's good enough explanation?
I should give you that, potentially you'd have more money or grants.
Small grants amounts, you know, really, I think it's just, it's the real design is to get municipalities to have some common goals. So, you know, where everybody has their own goals, 169 separate paths that we're aligned, Sustainable CT is trying to pull us all together. So that we're moving in the same direction towards the same goals, which benefits the entire state zone.
Hey, Mayor.
Mr. Governor.
Yes, what would be the obligations of, of this, of the Torrington Sustainability Team, what are we asking them to do?
They would have to meet quarterly, as I said earlier, Jeremy Leifer has been taking the lead on two of the areas. Our plan of conservation and development falls into one of the categories on land use. The other category that is of highest interest right now is on equity. So the sustainability team would meet quarterly to discuss the goals that you need to attain. Certification in that particular program area.
Okay, will there be ultimately, if not immediately, well, possibly immediately, any, any, any money, any monies. Attached to this initiative that are coming out of Torrington's budget for this?
No, other than our, you, you'll see that two of the members on this team are city staff.
Right.
And that contribution of in-kind, there will be no fines paid.
Okay, this is not gonna be like something, again, the certification that goes with, you know, within our schools every 10 years. Then we have a committee come in and they evaluate what we've done, what we haven't done and. In some ways, there are strings attached to what their assessment of our. Progress in, in our school system, you don't foresee that being the case with this sustainability, that the state will then appoint some committee to come and evaluate us and make recommendations by which. There might be some strings attached.
Yeah, it's the accreditation of our schools that you are speaking of.
Yes, yeah, yeah, exactly.
I don't see the state coming in and doing that in, you know, in this particular.
Okay.
Program area.
Okay.
Do I see that being a goal of the state in the future? I mean, potentially, yes, yeah.
I'm sure when we get to the grants call, they're gonna want information of our sustainability and what we did to get towards that grant, if they are allowing grants to come out from there.
Right.
These grants that come out of Sustainable CT are not. These grants that come out of Sustainable CT are not state grants. These are actually, um, funded through, um, a few of the corporations. Eversource being one of the, um, biggest donors for these Sustainable CT grants. So these are not state grants. These are actually, you know, corporations that are, uh, looking to be our partners.
Okay, tha- thanks, Mayor. You know my, you know my general perception is that the more we can keep the state out of our business, the happier personally I would be. So I was just curious what the next, the next evolution of this, uh, process is on the state side. I guess it's pretty much big. That's it, Mayor. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate those. Any other comments? Then I'll call a motion. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, I'll entertain a motion, uh, acting here as the Water Pollution Control Authority to accept the recommendation of the WPCA Administrator to enter into contract negotiations with Connecticut Environmental Technologies LLC for sledge hauling and disposal of Torrenton's WPCA's de-water municipal sledge.
I'll move it.
Councilwoman Rabino, seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. Are there questions on this motion? I see Mr. Tassie and Mr. Drew on the call. Hearing no questions. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fourteen, I'll entertain a motion, again acting here as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from fund number four ninety, sanitary sewer capital permit. Uh, this is an invoice to Ray Pierce in the sum of nine hundred, ninety dollars and ninety-two cents.
Fourteen.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rabino, seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept Corporation Council's recommendation and authorize the mayor pursuant to CGS section twelve dash one seven nine to release the lees described in Attorney Michelle's memo dated April fifth, twenty twenty-one. So, thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Sorry.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rabino. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seventeen, I'll entertain a motion by the city council acting here as the WPCA to accept the recommendations of the tax collector to authorize a sewer use refunds as indicated on list dated April fifth, twenty twenty-one. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Rabino. Seconded and seconded by Councilwoman Wagner. Uh, questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eighteen.
Yeah, sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah.
Oh. See? The work keeps up now that we're all, like, back in session here. Item sixteen, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector to authorize the tax refunds indicated on this date of April fifth, twenty twenty-one. So moved. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner, and seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. Council. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item eighteen, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the subcommittee.
Move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rabino.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
At this time, there's, uh, no report from the arts subcommittee. We, uh, tabled our, our, uh, stuff that we're dealing with right now, hopefully with more information from council and from the police department. Um, we're kind of, uh, crossing and dotting right now, then we should be able to bring it forward after the next meeting to go to a public hearing.
Okay.
Move it closer.
Good. Good, yeah. Good ordinances do take time to create. I'll, um, move into item number nineteen. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads. So. Thank you, Councilwoman Wagner, seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're open. Uh, so I see, uh, Public Works Director Raymond Drew is still on the call. Anything else?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, our purchasing agent, oh, she doesn't have a microphone. Anything this evening? Um, Penny? Moving on. Anything this evening, Chief Tawley?
No, nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, is Brett Simmons still on this call? Brett, anything this evening?
Uh, nothing, Mayor. I hope everyone had a great holiday and, um, look forward to starting up some programs and events this coming spring and summer.
Great. Thank you. Um, Mr. Towsley was on the call. Anything this evening?
Oh, nothing for me. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, is Captain Barone still on?
Yes.
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Uh, and I think is Rista Malaka still on the call? She may have jumped off. All right. Item twenty, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members. So, thank you, Councilwoman Wagner.
Aye.
And seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll go to our, um, screen numbers first. Anything this evening, Councilman Alder?
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you.
And then Councilman Waldron?
No, nothing from me, Mayor. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Governor?
Uh, the only thing, Mayor, is to officially announce that I have retired from ESPN as of Friday.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Counselor.
Yeah. Thank you. And I've spent the weekend wondering what the hell did I do? So. I, I, I suddenly realized the, the open horizon is indeed very open. I don't know what I'm gonna do with all this time. It's really.
I'll give you a list.
Really welcome. Uh, that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Congratulations. Um, to the floor, Councilwoman Wagner. I know these nightmares, so it's just nice to be back. Councilwoman Rabino.
Uh, congratulations, Paul.
Thank you, Frank.
Can we get appropriations for new lock? Or get it fixed?
I will work on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray.
The low state.
And in our public works, um, capital funding.
Yes, I will put that in the capital work cap, the capital improvement plan.
Okay. If we have to get a new one, we're in capital. If not, put it under maintenance. Um, and the good thing was, Mayor, your lights didn't go off.
Yes.
Finally, I'm actually still in the light. You're right. Now that is a light.
You didn't have to get up and jump the jacks or anything like that.
We all felt sorry.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. Anything, Councilwoman Rabino?
Just congratulations, um, Paul. I'm not far behind you, so, um, we can always figure out what else to do next, but, oh, I think your public service will keep you busy.
Well, sure. All right.
We need, you know, might want to put you both on.
No, more than we can work.
Hey, Paul.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, I have forty-nine more class days left.
You're counting, right?
Yep.
Good for you.
There being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So, thank you, Councilwoman Wagner, seconded by Councilwoman Rabino. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you. Have a good night, all.